Good evening. Toronto Police have identified two people of interest in a stabbing death at a TTC station last night.
The violent incident has left many riders shaken. CTV's Beth Macdonnell has been speaking with riders and joins us live tonight with the very latest. Beth?
Nathan, Michelle, tonight, police have identified the victim as 39-year-old Matthew Rumble of Toronto. And this public display of violence has left people shocked, scared, and upset. In an instant, people working near Jane Station knew it was something terrible. The horror they witnessed, the tragic end of a stabbing in the bus bay, leaving a man dead.
I looked out the window and I saw a guy lying on the floor. As soon as I looked at him, you could see that he wasn't moving, nothing. I knew he was dead immediately.
This man rushed over with towels and gloves for TTC staff to try and help, while this woman looked on, feeling helpless.
Emergency services tried to help him. They do like heart massage and everything like that. And it was a lot of people around and a lot of blood.
The violence erupted Tuesday shortly before 6:00 during the busy evening commute.
There was an altercation that took place on the bus as it arrived at Jane Subway Station. At that point, the altercation spilled into the Bay Area here behind me, where one male was stabbed.
Among the pieces of evidence left behind, a black bag and what appears to be an empty gray sheath, which can be used to hold a knife. Police say a male and female were seen taking off.
It was two people running down the street, right? They were actually not in the sidewalk, they were on the road. And I saw people running and kind of like screaming, like, run faster or something like that.
His mother breaking down last year, 16-year-old Gabriel Malga Hayes, was stabbed and killed on a bench at Keel Station, just three stops over from Jane. The boy's death coming to mind for some here now, just as safety on the public system is being questioned.
It's getting really scary.
Because this is a TTC hub, you know, it's unfortunately often like a little bit of a hotbed of, you know, there's people in distress in the area a lot, so it's something that we live with.
The TTC says it understands customers' concerns while the system remains safe, moving hundreds of millions of people every year without incident.
We'll have video from the bus, we'll have video from the station. There's probably video outside the station.
While riders and community members grapple with the life lost.
When I leave the salon, it goes like 9:00 PM, and it had still laying there. And it's like, it's scary, like you see the blood, you see this hat, and you see the person there before.
It was really bad. I had a really horrible night last night, and I'm still thinking about it, and it's the worst.
It's not clear how the fight began, or if the people involved knew each other. Police say there is a male suspect. He is described as between 5'9" and 5'11", with a thin build. There is also a female who is of interest in this case. She is described as having blond hair with a thin build. Reporting live, I'm Beth Macdonnell at Jane Station. Michelle, back to you.
Thank you, Beth. And still ahead tonight, shocking video from a Queen West clothing store of an armed robbery in broad daylight. A 15-year-old has been charged. You'll hear from the store employee who stepped in to stop it. But first, there are new criminal charges tonight against Frank Stronach.
The 91-year-old billionaire was first charged in early June with several sex charges. CTV's John Muselman is live tonight at the courthouse in Brampton with more. John, what is the latest?
Well, we did get confirmation, Nathan, from pure regional police that there have been additional charges. I'm at the Brampton courthouse right now. We'll show you some video here, Frank Stronach and some still photographs. This case came to light on June the 7th, but we can now mention that the new additional charges include six counts of sexual assault, two historical counts of attempted rape, and one count of indecent assault. Now, that's a total of 13 charges here. Stronach, as we mentioned, was first arrested on June the 7th. He's since been released on bail. Now, we were able to speak to his lawyer at the original day when he was charged, and his lawyer, Brian Greenspan, categorically denies on behalf of his clients any of these allegations. Again, this is a historical case. Court documents that were obtained by CTV News shows that the Canadian billionaire, the alleged assaults are from July 1980, February 1986, and April of 2023. Again, he has been released on bail. He's scheduled to appear here at the Brampton courthouse on July the 8th.
Reporting live in Brampton, I'm John Muselman. I'll send it back to you. Thank you, John. Time now for a check on the forecast. Here's a live look outside. A few clouds, comfortable conditions, but we did have some off-and-on rain in some areas. Will the trend continue? Jessica Smith is here with a look at the current conditions. Hey, Jess.
Hey, the bulk of the heaviest part of the system is past us now, but it came down pretty fast and furious as it made its way across southern Ontario. That cold front literally slices through all that heat, and behind it, it feels significantly cooler, not cold by any stretch, but you can see that defined line of showers as it kind of pushes its way out. Temperature-wise, we've seen quite a change. We were at about 29 early on. Winds are still southwesterly, fairly moderate. The gusts aren't too bad, but temperature-wise, we dipped down around the golden horseshoe. Again, we were in that kind of mid to upper 20 range for a good portion of the morning now, kind of in the upper teens. As we head into the day tomorrow, we are dipping below seasonal for the first time in quite a while. Coming up, your full forecast. Right now, it's back over to Nathan.
All right. Thank you, Jess. Just ahead, more questions about the closing of the Ontario Science Centre, which offers to help keep it open. The government announces it's looking for a temporary location, and the premier declines to answer questions. CTV John Woodward will have more in moments. But first, councillors were tackling the issue of reno evictions at City Hall today.
It is a growing issue for a number of city residents, with politicians trying to find a legal way to tackle it. CTV's Rahim Ladani has more.
With nearly half of all Toronto residents being renters, city council has taken a step towards protecting those who have a roof over their heads, but fear they'll be kicked out by profit-driven landlords.
They're leaving, and then the rent is doubled or tripled. That's the problem.
Mayor Olivia Chow's reno evictions motion is moving forward, to create a bylaw that would make it mandatory for landlords to have an engineer's report approved by council before their tenants are removed for necessary renovations.
Making sure that we have a process in place where the city can actually validate that there is in fact a building permit being pulled before a reno eviction occurs is thoughtful and prudent.
Toronto was following a similar policy adopted by the city of Hamilton earlier this year. Only councillor Stephen Holliday is opposed to the idea, claiming the issue should be addressed by the province.
We have so many things that we need to do in the city of Toronto, and so many complaints that come forward from residents about things like grass cutting that's not even being addressed. And yet, here we have council wading into the job of another government.
In another effort to tackle Toronto's ongoing affordable housing crisis, a rental housing supply program has also received the green light.
This new program adopts the new definition of affordable. That's based on your income, 30%, not based on market like before.
The mayor endorsing a plan to spend $350 million, which the city says is money that has already been approved, but is being reallocated from the city's capital budget. The program promises to build almost 6,000 new rental units.
And they're all going to get shovels in the ground between now and the end of 2025. That's a construction start every month for the next year and a half.
These rent geared income projects will be rent-controlled for at least 40 years, and provide incentives to nonprofits who step up.
This plan recognizes that the city cannot simply rely on the private sector to build the complete range of housing needed.
Bringing the city closer to its commitment to build 65,000 new rent-controlled homes by the year 2030.
After warning during last year's campaign that Olivia Chow would be an unmitigated disaster for Toronto, Premier Doug Ford shared a different take today.
I want to send a big congratulations to Mayor Olivia Chow on your one-year anniversary being the mayor of Toronto. Mayor Chow, you've shown real leadership over the last year, and have been a great partner as we work together on many, many priorities. And it's, looks like it's going to fit you, because I couldn't even get this around one arm.
The premier showed off a jacket he'd gotten for Chow, who has a 66 on it because she is the 66th mayor of Toronto. It's from Don Bosco Catholic Secondary School, where his late brother, Rob, once coached. Doug Ford said it was a thank you for her part in dedicating an Etobicoke Stadium in his name. And the premier may have been talking about the mayor today, but he wasn't talking about the recently closed Science Centre.
Doug Ford didn't take reporter questions at an appearance earlier today, but the questions surrounding the Science Centre and whether it could have been saved are mounting. CTV's John Woodward has more.
For premier, it's John Woodward from CTV. We're hoping to ask you some questions about the Science Centre and...
No response from Ontario Premier Doug Ford reached at an unrelated event at Pearson Airport Wednesday. The questions about the decision to abruptly shut the Ontario Science Centre on safety grounds, even though shutting the building wasn't the only option in the engineering report.
Shutting the building down is not warranted?
At issue, reinforced autoclaved aerated concrete panels in the roof, around 6% of them needing to be replaced. Once widely used, the panels are breaking down in buildings all over the world, including in 52 schools in Toronto's school district, as well as hundreds of other schools in Ontario. The TDSB says it has spent approximately $109 million to replace some roofs, and plans to replace dozens more by 2029. But spokesperson Ryan Byrd says the panels don't pose any immediate threat.
Bottom line, it is safe to remain in these schools.
Toronto's leaders suspect the Science Centre is safe too, with a bit of work. The city exploring what it can do with the building, pointing to an agreement with the province that gives the city a say.
Well, the province can't just walk away.
Infrastructure Ontario issuing a request for proposals to secure a temporary location for the Ontario Science Centre, with 50,000 to 100,000 square feet of retail commercial space in a dynamic area of Toronto or surrounding areas that is suitable for this use and easily transit accessible. "A location that sounds a lot like the existing Science Centre," says Elsa Lam of Canadian Architect Magazine.
Perfect location for a temporary location of the Science Centre would be exactly where it is right now.
Petitions and letters have been sent by tens of thousands, the firm of Toronto's famous architect Raymond Moriyama offering up its services for free.
These are kind of standard repairs of a building in this age.
In the background, the government's plan to put a new, smaller Science Centre at its controversial Ontario place redevelopment, something it has spent considerable political capital on.
For premier, it's John Woodward from CTV.
Political capital it continues to spend as questions swirl about whether the Ontario Science Centre can still be saved. John Woodward, CTV News.
It was a violent crime, all caught on camera, happening in broad daylight in a bustling area of the city.
An armed robbery, which did not go as the robber had planned, has now led to a teen being charged. CTV's Mike Walker is live on Queen Street tonight with more. Mike?
Well, Michelle, Nathan, this armed robbery happened around 6:00 PM Sunday at Backdoor Toronto. We spoke with two of the store employees who tell us they didn't think the gun was real, and as you're about to see, took matters into their own hands.
Security footage shows an armed robbery in a Queen Street West sneaker store. One of the three mass suspects can be seen pointing a gun at the back of the employee's head.
Telling me to get down, and I wasn't getting down, I was just squatting. I wasn't trying to make it like too big of a deal.
While attempting to run out of the store with some clothing, Backdoor Sales Associate Bray lunges at the armed robber.
It was just fight or flight at that moment, so I just ran after him, tackled him, and then I had him in a headlock, trying to keep him in the store, so that I have the door locked.
Bray says he never thought the gun was real.
I didn't think that he would actually like, you know, bring a real gun to a robbery like this, at least for clothes and shoes, right? It's instinct, like my adrenaline is rushing, I just like, man, let me get this guy.
As Bray and the armed robber struggle, manager AB rushes out from the back to help. Punches are thrown as he tries to disarm the suspect.
I took it off, ripped off his sleeve, put the weapon in it, and then I threw it behind the counter to keep it safe. We got him disarmed and locked inside the store. We just let him go and had 911 come.
Within minutes, police arrive and arrest a 15-year-old Toronto boy. The handgun also seized. That's when the two employees learned the gun was in fact real.
Yeah, big shock, yeah. Glad it played out in our favor.
Two of the suspects got away with two pieces of clothing, each valued between $500 and $800. Bray and AB say nothing like this has ever happened to them before. They didn't suffer any injuries.
I'm not surprised at the end of the day, because I know a lot of stores, like retail stores, have been getting hit up. Glad everything, you know, worked in our favor, and no one got hurt.
God was on our side.
God was on our side for sure.
Now, the teen suspect in this case is facing several gun and robbery-related charges. Toronto Police continue to search for the other two suspects. Reporting live, I'm Mike Walker. Nathan, back to you.
Thank you, Mike. And police are searching for a convicted sex offender as part of an indignity to a human body investigation. Investigators are concerned 52-year-old Rajan Hermal Perron may be exploiting vulnerable and marginalized people in Toronto, including sex workers, the homeless, and members of the LGBTQ2S+ community. This comes as police say Perron was aware of a deceased person inside an apartment near Broadview and Dundas, but did not notify authorities. They say he may be using a different name.
He had befriended our deceased, and they were known to be seen together frequently. He was using his alias of Christie, Daniel Joseph Christie.
Police say an autopsy showed the person died of natural causes. They're still seeking Perron, who's wanted for breaching a long-term suspension order. He served three years in prison on a conviction for sexual assault with a weapon, kidnapping and forcible confinement of a sex trade worker before his release in 2021.
Meanwhile, Toronto Police are asking for the public's help identifying a woman whose remains were found in a tent downtown last month. Investigators shared an artist's rendition of the deceased woman's face, as well as images of her tattoos and boots. On the morning of May 29th, they say she was located by paramedics in Trinity Square Park near the Eaton Centre. She's described as 40 to 60 years old and may have gone by Sherry or Cherry. Anyone with information is asked to contact police. It was an unsettling morning for residents of an East York apartment building as flames erupted. A fire started in a unit on the fourth floor of a building near Cosburn and Logan just before 11:30. Toronto Fire tells CP24 a cat was pulled from the apartment and is back with its owners. Emergency crews extinguished the blaze and didn't report any injuries. A protest was held downtown today by tenants on a rent strike.
They were showing off some of the dire conditions they say they've been living in for months. CTV's Janice Golding has the details.
Kids have to see what they live on Barney River's building.
Sheed Limbada stands outside the Bay Adelaide Centre to deliver some mice, rats, and cockroaches from his building to his landlord's doorstep.
Too much mouse, too much cockroach, bad bugs, carpet has a bubble.
This video was actually taken inside Limbada's unit at 1440 Lawrence Avenue West, where he, his wife, and four children reside.
This is the same place where I get mouse inside.
Meanwhile, Yogesh Katri shows us the bathtub in a seventh-floor unit, where a few months ago, his wife was shocked to find a mouse.
It's terrible, like, it's scary, like, you know, and, you know, we want this to be fixed.
And he says the cockroaches are even worse.
Usually in the night, or this area is full.
These are some of the tenants who staged a protest outside Barney River Investments today to highlight the conditions they say they've been living in for years.
This is the kinds of conditions, substandard, I have never seen buildings so bad in my life as the co-chair of the York Southwestern Tenant Union, and we've seen it all.
Today's protest, the latest move from the tenants at 1440 and 1442 Lawrence Avenue West. They've been on rent strike since October to try to force Barney River Investments to stop above guideline rent increases and do basic maintenance.
A lease is a two-way agreement. Tenants pay their rent, and a landlord provides a home that is livable. Barney River has not provided a home that is livable for these tenants for years.
So far, however, the group's tactics don't appear to be working. Katri's floor is still coming up, and his walls are bubbling. Meanwhile, although the tenant's rent is being held in trust by the landlord-tenant board, the striking residents say they're getting eviction notices.
We can't live because everywhere, so rent is, first of all, rent is so expensive. We're living, we're working at the minimum wages, little bit up and down. I mean, how you can survive?
CTV News did reach out to Barney River Investments, but they told us they had no comment at this time. Janice Golding, CTV News. The Ontario Ombudsman released his annual report today, and he highlighted a near-record number of requests for help from members of the public looking for recourse from government and related bodies.
Paul Dubay said it was heartening that Ontarians are seeking his office's assistance in a wide range of areas.
We are seeing adults with developmental disabilities not getting the supports and services that they need. We are assisting people who have been deprived of access to justice by an under-resourced and overwhelmed tribunal system. We are hearing of children being housed by struggling children's aid societies in offices or trailers. We are addressing the human rights of inmates that are being violated in a correction system that both staff and inmates say has inadequate resources and infrastructure.
The Ombudsman's office said it couldn't tell governments where to spend money, but it could highlight areas of concern. The report noted just over 27,000 complaints and inquiries last fiscal year, and says 57% were resolved within two weeks. We're following developments in Bolivia, where there's been an attempted coup. Armored vehicles rammed the doors of the government palace, where men in military uniform were seen outside. President Louis Arce vowed to stand firm and confronted the commander of the army in the palace hallway. He ordered him to withdraw the soldiers. Arce then swore in new military leaders who instructed the troops to return home. They're leaving now.
Decades after it was taken away, the stage is now set for Newfoundland and Labrador to begin rebuilding the commercial cod fishery. The federal government is lifting a moratorium that was in place since 1992. Tens of thousands of jobs were lost after Ottawa closed the fishery to protect dwindling stocks and allow time for them to recover. Now, the cod stock is in the cautious zone, which means fishery's decision should still prioritize regrowth. There will be a total allowable catch of 18,000 tons for the 2024 season.
The stage is getting set in Atlanta for the first U.S. presidential debate.
Joe Biden and Donald Trump will face each other again in what some are expecting to be must, CTV. CTV's Joy Melvin reports.
President Joe Biden knows he needs to shake things up. Voters are concerned about his age, his leadership, and polls tell us many Americans believe Donald Trump would do a better job with the economy and stubbornly high inflation.
These are the two most disliked candidates in presidential campaign history. They need to give voters something fresh, because voters are tired of the same old, same old.
When Donald Trump steps on the debate stage, he will be as a convicted felon. Democrats greeting him with these billboards around Atlanta, painting Trump as too dangerous and reckless for the White House in this campaign ad.
Donald Trump is only out for himself. Joe Biden is fighting for your family.
And while Biden has been prepping doing intense mock debates, Trump's taking a looser approach. Advisors helping him prep on policy to go after Biden on the economy and immigration at the border.
I think I've been preparing for it for my whole life, if you want to know the truth. And I'm not sure you can lock yourself into a room for two weeks, or one week, or two days and really learn what you have to know and...
Unlike the last debate in 2020 that devolved into a shouting match.
The crass left, will you shut up, man?
This time, new rules. Mics will be muted when someone speaks, and there will be no audience. Trump's not happy about that, calling it a sterile, dead room. His advisors hope it will help Trump stay on message, prepping him for questions about abortion and his role in the January 6th Capitol attack.
You have a race that's essentially tied in the polls at this point, and so I think that puts sort of equal pressure on both of the candidates, both in terms of the opportunity the debate presents to them, but also the risks.
And in such a tight race, this debate will be crucial, as these two presidents present two very different visions for America's future. Joy Melvin, CTV News, Atlanta.
NATO's new Secretary General will begin work October 1st after his appointment was made official today. All 32 alliance members gave Mark Rutte their backing today during a meeting at NATO headquarters in Brussels. His appointment became a formality after Romania's president withdrew, having failed to gain traction. He was the only other candidate. The outgoing Dutch prime minister says he looks forward to taking up the job with great vigor. Rutte will replace Jens Stoltenberg, who's stepping down after a decade in the post.
Julian Assange's 13-year legal saga is over. The WikiLeaks founder returned home to Australia today after pleading guilty in a deal with the U.S. Justice Department. Assange arrived at Canberra Airport just after 7:30 PM local time. He had argued he was acting as a journalist when he published stolen military secrets at the height of America's wars in Afghanistan and Iraq. Assange leaked video of a U.S. helicopter attack on civilians in Baghdad and revealed classified documents and diplomatic cables. Some viewed him as a hero, others a traitor. The U.S. says his actions put lives at risk and sought his extradition. Assange served five years in a London prison, seven more holed up in the Ecuador embassy. He says he will seek a pardon.
In Prince Edward Island, a tribute to one of the most prolific and widely read authors in Canadian history. The Royal Canadian Mint released a commemorative coin honoring Lucy Maude Montgomery, the author of the Anne of Green Gables books. The design features Anne Shirley looking out at PEI farmland. The event took place in Cavendish, marking the 150th anniversary of Montgomery's birth. Her granddaughter says it is an unimaginable honor, and hopes Canadians cherish it as much as the family does.
Coming up on CTV News, he's a man on a mission to see the world by delivering postcards from the Galapagos. And today, Johnny's journey took him to Toronto. His special delivery still ahead.
And I'm Pat Foran. Coming up on Consumer Alert, are you flying this summer? If you are, hopefully, your flight is not canceled or delayed. If it is, you could be entitled to compensation. But a 12-year-old boy who was left stuck in an airport has been waiting for months for his check. I'll have my report just ahead.
Downtown Toronto is the hotspot today at 29.2 degrees, but after the showers have moved through in that cold front, we've seen a significant drop in temperatures. Coming up, I'll have a full look at your long-range forecast as we head in towards the end of the week. And stay with us, we've got another full night of great shows for you right here on
When you're planning a vacation, no one likes to show up at the airport to hear that your flight has been delayed or canceled.
New regulations are now in place to compensate passengers when flight plans go astray, but getting that money isn't always easy. Here's Pat Foran and Consumer Alert.
Nathan and Michelle, the new rules were implemented to give passengers more rights if an airline disrupts their travel plans. Some airlines try to blame reasons beyond their control for problems, but even if they agree to pay you, good luck trying to get it.
I have over 60 communications back and forth with them.
Ian Thompson of Stony Creek has been trying to get compensation for his 12-year-old son Nathan's delayed and then canceled flight. In February, Nathan went to Florida with his older cousins to see his grandparents. Flying back, his flight was delayed multiple times and then canceled and rescheduled for the next day.
I was just overall ready to come home, because we just, we're trying to find out for a very long time if it was canceled or if it was just delayed.
His grandparents had to return to the airport to pick him up, so he wouldn't be stuck there overnight.
Lucky enough that his grandparents were still in Fort Lauderdale, that he could stay there, because if there wasn't, he would be staying at the airport.
Under new air passenger protection rules, if your flight is delayed three to six hours, you deserve $400. Six to nine hours, $700, and nine hours or more, $1,000. Nathan flew with Flair Airlines, and when the family applied for compensation, the airline agreed he should receive it.
They did admit it was their fault. They said we'll get a compensation of $1,000.
They were told they would get the money within a month, then it turned into two months, three months, and almost four.
They won't fulfill their commitment, and there's just excuse upon excuse, and not willing to pay what they've admitted that was their fault.
When CTV News reached out to Flair Airlines, a spokesperson said, "Regrettably, the voucher was a system error, and we are investigating the root cause." I believe now the passenger would have received their $1,000 payment. That's when the Thompsons contacted us to say they finally got the compensation they deserved.
A couple days after we spoke, and it was magically there.
It looked like it was not going to come, so I feel pretty good about it. Thank you, CTV.
CTV, you're awesome. You do great stuff for people. Thank you so much for the work you do.
And if you're on a delayed or canceled flight and feel you deserve compensation, there is a process that you have to follow. And if your claim is denied by the airline, you can also complain to the Canadian Transportation Agency. On your side, I'm Pat Foran.
If you have a consumer story idea, email us at alert@ctv.ca.
Well, this midweek mark, multifaceted weather-wise. The day started one way, seemed really good, and then it got a little stormy in the afternoon.
Yeah, this rain is this on-again, off-again thing, you know?
The switch has been turned off. It's slowly being turned off as we head into the evening, but almost the bigger change is the temperature drop. Between noon and now, we dropped 10 degrees. So as this rain made its way through this afternoon, the cold front with it quite literally sliced through the heat again and dropped our temperatures down, and this cooldown is lasting for a little while. Weather is brought to you by Trane, the most reliable heating and cooling brand. It's hard to stop a train. Now, we saw that sunshine early on this morning. The rain came through kind of mid to late afternoon. You heard the rumbles of thunder out there. We saw it sweeping across, and then we start to see things lighten up a little bit. The chance of rain does linger into the early evening, but the good news is, as we step in towards our night, if you have evening sports going on, maybe 8, 9 o'clock, you'll be all right. Taking a look at our temperature map, we're still sitting at just 19, still a humidex, but we, again, we're at 29 at the lunch hour. We've dropped 10 degrees. That cold front really did its job, along with that northerly flow to the wind.
Everybody in Northern Ontario already feeling that cooldown. That southwestern corner's still a bit of an outlier and out towards Ottawa. Tonight, back to seasonal. We had a pretty warm night last night. We're sitting right where we should be for this time of year, but areas up towards, say, Perry Sound, Bancroft, they're actually into the single digits, not by much, but it is a cooler night ahead of many people through Southern Ontario. Into the day tomorrow, just 21. We should be at 26. There is still a little bit of a humidex kind of value going on tomorrow, but a significantly cooler day with temperatures in the low to kind of like mid-20s for the most part, 19 through Owen Sound and the same through Orillia. This line of showers has kind of sliced through. There's that cold front behind it ushering in some cooler air, but there is high pressure on the way. So as we step in towards the day tomorrow, some sunshine on the way, but it's cooler. Not cold by any means. You can still wear t-shirts, whatever you want to do, but it is a little cooler. Now, the bulk of the showers, as we kind of approach 9:00 PM, are gone. They've made their way through Southern Ontario, kind of lingering out towards Kingston, Ottawa area. And then overnight, we get a pretty nice clearing. We set the day off tomorrow. A decent amount of sunshine out there. And then as we head into the afternoon, a few clouds, but overall, it is fantastic. A lot of kids are already done school, some are wrapping up, but it is going to be beautiful as we head through our Thursday and Friday, if you want to get a kickstart on your long weekend. We are watching, though, a system set to bring some showers. They come overnight Friday into our Saturday morning and then very spotty. So not a wash of the day, but just pockets of showers off and on. Through your day tomorrow, again, it is below seasonal, but maybe refreshing for some who are still kind of reeling off the heat from last week. Friday, back to where we should be, a little unsettled to kick things off for the long weekend. But your Sunday, your Monday, looking to be beautiful for the long weekend and stepping into July into the mid-20s. Nathan, I'll take it.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you, Jess.
Thanks.
Also tonight, Lee Side, Zach Eadie's expected to be a first-round pick in tonight's NBA draft. Could the 7-foot-4 center be joining his hometown Toronto Raptors?
As the long weekend approaches, Canadian Blood Services is experiencing a shortage of donors.
Amid an increase in demand for blood, as CTV's Pauline Chan reports, is prompting a call for people to roll up their sleeves.
July and August are two of the toughest months of the year for Canadian Blood Services.
In the GTA in general, this week alone, we're looking at an appointment gap of about 1,700, which means that we're looking at adding about 1,700 appointments are needed this week alone and thousands more moving into July and August.
Andrew McCartney says parents are on holiday, kids are on holiday, so people's schedules are disrupted. Plus, there's an increase in demand due to a rise in trauma and accidents in the summer. According to Canadian Blood Services, the demand for blood products was pretty steady for about a decade.
In the last two years or so, we've noticed that that's reversed into an increase of demand by about 2% per year. There are a few reasons for that. One, a growing population. Two, an aging population, so a lot of different surgeries. And three is an increased diversity of our population.
And with medical developments, more patients need blood transfusions for surgeries and treatments than ever. For example, a thalassemia patient might need blood every two to five weeks. Justine Betty, who was in donating plasma today, says she's made giving blood a regular weekly practice.
It's just a really convenient way for me to donate because I can come in anytime. It's convenient for me.
Anyone 17 or older and in generally good health can donate. Go to blood.ca for more information.
Yeah, it's a really great way to help your community and get some free snacks.
Pauline Chan, CTV News.
Hollywood is breathing a sigh of relief today after a potential strike by a major entertainment union became much less likely. The International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees represents most behind-the-scenes film and TV crews in the U.S. 50,000 of them were set to walk off the job without a new deal as Hollywood continues to feel the aftereffects of months-long strikes by writers and actors last year. IATSE told members last night that a deal had been reached with producers on pay hikes and artificial intelligence. Now, the deal still needs to be ratified by members.
The official trailer is out for Tom Hanks' next film, featuring several other stars and special reunions for the actor. Here is the sixth collaboration between Tom Hanks and director Robert Zemeckis. It features Hanks and fellow Forest gum star Robin Wright as a couple over the span of several decades with the help of de-aging technology and makeup. It's based on a graphic novel by Richard McGuire, telling the story of a house and everyone who lived there over the span of a century. The movie's out in November.
We need a nobody, a nobody I can trust.
So are you guys like the FBI or something?
Also today, we got a look at the official trailer for Halle Berry and Mark Wahlberg's next film. She plays an intelligence operative convincing her high school sweetheart to go on a high-stakes mission for the U.S. government. It's out in August.
After the break, WestJet could begin grounding flights as early as Thursday as the airline faces a possible strike by its mechanics. Details on the potential travel turbulence.
We hold on to the heat and the chance of showers as we head into the evening. So if you're heading out to the baseball diamond, be prepared for some spotty showers. Heading into the end of the week, though, sunshine returns. Coming up, I'll have a look at your full seven-day forecast.
Looked out the window and I saw a guy lying on the floor. And soon as I looked at him, you could see that he wasn't moving, nothing. I knew he was dead immediately.
Updating our top stories, police have identified the man killed in Jane Station last night as 39-year-old Matthew Rumpel. They're also looking for two people of interest, a man and a woman. The stabbing attack happened just before 6:00 last night and has left many riders shaken.
Taught me to get down, and I wasn't getting down. I was just squatting. I wasn't trying to make it like too big of a deal.
Employees at a Queen West clothing store are speaking out after fighting back against an armed robbery. Video from inside the store shows a man with a gun attempting to order staff to the floor. They ended up trying to disarm one of the robbers as two others run from the store. Police have charged a 15-year-old Toronto teenager in the incident.
Perfect location for a temporary location of the science center would be exactly where it is right now.
And there are more questions tonight about the future of the Ontario Science Center as the government announced it is looking for a temporary site for the center. There are new offers to help repair and reopen the original spot.
Remember to keep up to date day and night through our website, ctvenewtoronto.ca, and by downloading the CTV News app. And if you have a news tip, photos or video of breaking news, let us know.
There is a new boss in charge of one of Canada's most successful convenience store brands. BNN Bloomberg's Paul Bagnall has more in tonight's business report.
One of Canada's most successful companies is getting a new boss. Alimentation Kustar, the Montreal-based company behind gas station convenience stores like Circle K and Kustar, said Alex Miller will take over as CEO on September 6th. Miller will replace Brian Hannish, who has been CEO since late 2014. During Hannish's time as the top executive, shares of alimentation Kustar have risen by about 330%. Recently, however, the stock has declined from its peak as sales at the company's stores have slowed. Let's take a look at some of the closing market numbers for today. The Canadian dollar traded down slightly to slightly less than 73 cents U.S. West Texas Intermediate Crude Oil moved higher by 7 cents U.S. per barrel to $80.90. And Western Canadian Select, the Canadian grade of heavy oil, was priced at $66.50 U.S. per barrel, down 82 cents. As for stock markets, the S&amp;P TSX Composite Index in Toronto closed very slightly higher, up about 5.5 points or a small fraction of a percentage point to just under 21,794 points. That's the latest in business. I'm Paul Bagnall at BNN Bloomberg.
The Business Report is brought to you by Canadian Western Bank, the bank built for business.
WestJet's mechanics union has issued a renewed strike notice with potential impacts on Canada Day long weekend travelers.
We don't want any flights to be canceled. We want to serve Canadians the best way we can. It's the union amphor that has been acting very unreasonably for a long time now already that are now doing this in order to create maximum damage for Canadians.
The mechanics union says members overwhelmingly rejected WestJet's last contract proposal and accused the airline of not being open to meaningful negotiations on economic issues. WestJet says it will keep flights operating through a substantially reduced base network.
Owners of Apple devices will soon be able to do their own repairs with the company's blessing. Starting early next year, Canadians will get access to a program that provides them with parts, tools and manuals to fix their devices. The program will include 42 Apple products, ranging from the latest MacBook Airs to mobile devices, going as far back as the iPhone 12. Customers will have to pay for parts and rent tools necessary for repairs, but the manuals and diagnostic software will be free. This is going to be a very special night for so many young basketball players, including Toronto's own Zach Eadie. The 7-foot-4 center from Lee Side will likely hear his name called in the first round of the NBA draft at Brooklyn's Barclay Center. Eadie led Purdue to the NCAA championship game last season and is projected to be selected around the number 15 spot. The Toronto Raptors hold the 19th overall pick. Atlanta has the first selection in the draft.
Well, summer's officially begun for the Edmonton Oilers, and this was locker cleanout day. And the team held a final media availability this season, reflecting on not winning the cup despite coming so close.
It'll take some time to obviously get over first and foremost. You know, but at the end of the day, you are going to have to get over it at some point. And you know, we're going to carry on and we'll get ourselves ready for another important season and get ourselves ready to do it all over again. That's all you can do. And will there be a time to look back? Yeah, you know, there's lots of happy moments throughout those playoffs, for sure.
Again, disappointing. It's frustrating that, you know, there's only one team that can win, unfortunately. So, but again, very proud of, you know, what we've been through this year and how we, yeah, I guess, had a whole country, you know, rooting for us.
The Oilers revealed today that Leon Dreisaitl had hand and rib injuries that had team staff questioning whether he could play. Connor McDavid was also playing hurt, but his ailment was not disclosed. Edmonton lost Game 7 of the Cup Final to the Florida Panthers on Monday.
Meanwhile, the NHL unveiled new jerseys for next season today. And Toronto Maple Leaf star Auston Matthews got a preview saying he likes what he sees.
What special jersey?
Never gets old looking at this.
Matthews says the new Fanatics jerseys feel comfortable and look breathable. He added, "Any little detail that can help players perform at their best makes a difference." The base construction is the same, but there is an extra layer of fabric on the sleeves to mitigate wear and tear. There are also new shoulder fabrics and a new NHL shield, which includes a hologram finish. Just ahead, a surprise postcard from a stranger. The man on a mission to hand-deliver messages from the Galapagos across the planet arrives here in Toronto. A New Zealand man has arrived in Toronto as part of a year-long tour of seven continents.
On a mission to deliver dozens of letters, playing the role of postman for the Galapagos Islands. CTV Sean LeThong has the story.
Walking up to this home in Midtown Toronto, Johnny Beardmore has come from across the world to do something both profound and quite simple.
I've come to deliver a letter, a letter from the Galapagos Islands.
Originally from New Zealand, Beardmore found this mailbox while on a trip to the islands, a mailbox that relies on the goodwill of travelers to get letters to their destination.
You're encouraged to put a letter in, and then you go through the letters and see if you find one, and then you're encouraged to deliver it by hand.
Beardmore went much further, taking 50 letters and using the next year to travel the world delivering each one.
So I've just sort of surprising people, and people are, you know, initially a little bit taken back by the delivery, but then are opening up their house and their home, and they're telling me the most amazing stories of their lives.
He calls it the Galapagos Postman Challenge, documenting his travels on Instagram with the handle @BigOAdventures. It's already taken him from Antarctica through South and Central America, the United States, and now Canada.
Hello.
With this house in Toronto being letter 17.
Hi, my name is Johnny Beardmore. I've come all the way from the Galapagos Islands.
The reason he's doing this is a way to remember his father, who died 18 months ago from ALS. Beardmore is hoping to raise $100,000 showing how connected we all are and how this rare disease is closer than we think.
The reality is, it doesn't feel very rare, because as someone shares their story, someone else will say, "My aunt, my mom, my brother, my friend."
We take for granted our ability to move freely, to speak freely, to communicate around the world, and that's something that an ALS sufferer loses very quickly. Sorry for the shock.
At this house, Eva Lim received this letter from her daughter, who lives in Toronto, but sent the letter while on a trip last January.
I get so excited. I got goosebumps.
We quickly reached her daughter Steph while at work on FaceTime.
To have another person who's experienced something like that and then deliver it, it's also nice to know that the world is so small and uniting people. So it's also a really wonderful moment to share with another being.
All right, thank you again.
Beardmore left his contact information in case the family wants to learn more, but he also has two more letters to deliver in Ontario.
Well, there you go, folks. The Galapagos postman always delivers.
And after a few days here in Toronto, it's on to the next one. Sean LeThong, CTV News.
Always delivers, but it might take a few years.
Yeah, but what a way to see the world. And it's great that they're agreeable at the door and not, you know, "Who are you?" It worked out well today in Toronto.
I'd never answer my door, so it would have worked differently for me. But it is really cool, and I'm sure the weather there is maybe nicer than it is here. But for us, we are holding on to a bit of a cooler evening. So not cold by any stretch of the imagination, but cooler. So as you step outside, tonight's maybe a long-sleeved t-shirt, but the bulk of the rain has really pushed past. As you can see there with the timeline on the radar and satellite, as we kind of approached about 6:30, it really has pushed its way further east. Now, temperature-wise, it is still significantly cooler. We're at 19. We again dropped 10 degrees from the lunch hour. We're kind of in the upper teen range, low 20s, as we settle into the end of the day. Below seasonal, but a little sunny as we head into our Thursday, our Friday junior. But by the time we step into the weekend, it is going to be beautiful. A little rain Saturday, but it won't rain on our parade, I promise.
Good to know. Thank you, Jess. That's it for us. But be sure to join Omar Sadjanina's Night at 11 for CTV Natural News, followed by Zarida Alman with our next local newscast at 11:30.
In the meantime, our coverage continues anytime on CP24 and online at ctvenewtoronto.ca.
Here's Jessica Smith and all of us here at CTV News. Thank you for watching and have a great night.